So far, they have not messed too much with us.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is Monday, July 26th. It's four o'clock. We are the Administrative Committee of the Moscow City Council. Sitting up here with me are Maureen Lafflin and Sandra Kelly, as well as Mr. Redner, Jen Piffner. We're gonna, we've got two items on our agenda, plus some cool reports at the end, so we'll blow through the agenda items to get to the good stuff. First is the approval of the July 12th, 2021 Administrative Committee Meeting Minutes.
I think we should approve them.
Me, too. Okay, good. See how easy that was? Okay, the second item is the Personnel Policy Updates, Discipline Grievance, and Name Clearing.
Madam Chair, you might want to announce that the second item, the regularly scheduled item, is being pulled, since that was only in a communication to you that it was taken off the agenda.
Okay. The second item was indeed a Beer and Wine Garden Request for Grace Agenda Block Party that has been pulled by the applicant.
Yes, it was a request for a beer garden, and since that beer garden request is when withdrawn, the request to have the block party is something that's handled by staff through the Community Events Department, so they will be handling that.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Okay, now let's jump into the Personnel Policy, all the juicy goods.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes, we do have three policies.
Can I ask a question to Gary about that one? Either of those been pulled? Here comes the question because we're putting a permit. There seemed to be some inconsistency on what drafted up as a permit, and it said third to sixth, but when you looked at the map, it had the pink line that went down third to sixth, and then it also did fifth. But the permit that we put together appears to not include fifth.
Yes, there is typically a request, and staff will look at it, look at the size of the event, and the logistical issues, how many rights of way are being requested to be closed, so on and so forth. And then we'll reduce it if necessary so that it's right-sized. I mean, you may have an event that's big enough that it should be closed, but you can't stop all traffic from moving around, so they consider issues of traffic flow, convenience, and necessity of what the size should be.
Okay, thank you.
Should we try this again?
Third time's a charm.
All right, let's jump into the Personnel.
No more questions, no more questions right now.
Yes, so we do have three policies for your consideration today: the Employee Discipline, the Disciplinary Process, and Name Clearing Hearing Policies. So two of these are updates to current policies that we have, and that's the Employee Discipline and the Employee Grievance Policies. The new policy is the Name Clearing Hearing, which is also referred to as an opportunity to be heard, assertions of unlawful discrimination and retaliation, and name clearing hearings. So I'll start with discipline. Really, here, the only updates that we're seeing are better explanation or updated explanation of how the process works, both for the employee and for the supervisor. It still relies on our progressive disciplinary process that the city's had in place for many, many years now, 14-plus at least, starting with counseling and verbal warnings. And I should say, in every one of these steps that I'll outline, the supervisor or supervisor or supervisor supervisor's support to the employee to make sure that they can meet the expectations that are being outlined as best as possible on the city side are foremost. And that's something, I think, is more clearly spelled out, both in how we manage discipline now and in this policy. So we always want to make sure we're also providing the support that that employee needs, not just saying, "You need to do this, and this is the end of the conversation." So it's an ongoing conversation when you start with the counseling and the verbal warning. What we've done to accompany these steps is also provide some forms for employees. Supervisors hopefully are only doing this every now and then. It's not something they have in their back pocket necessarily, so we want to make that process as easy as possible. So it does, and I say that because a counseling or a verbal warning is often documented on paper, only because we need to remember that it happened and what happened in that instance. So it doesn't constitute a written warning, but it is on paper so that we can have a record of that happening. So then that takes us into a written warning, more formal documentation of the issue. Supervisor may just talk to somebody at a verbal warning, but if you're going to a written warning, you're usually talking with your supervisor supervisor, keeping folks in the loop as to what's going on.
Can I ask you something pretty quick on that? Actually, I just wanted to go back to the other one, the written, unwritten warning.
Yes.
So does the employee also have access to that part also?
Absolutely.
I figured that was the case, but...
So each of these steps would go into the employee's personnel file, and the employee has access to all of their personnel file items. Also, I would suggest if you're giving a verbal warning, saying, "Hey, this is how we're documenting, this is just how we're keeping track of it", in that conversation with that employee.
With trainings for supervisors, do you actually sit down and help them understand what category they should, you know, this kind of offense, whether they talk to you or someone else, or their supervisor, this kind of offense should probably start at three, you give discretion for the supervisor to pick, and if it's pretty egregious, they can go...
We haven't had a specific training on that, but I've been very humbled as to how many people have reached out to say, "Hey, this is what's going on. What's a good starting point? What should we be doing? What shouldn't we be doing?", those types of things. Looking forward to doing more supervisor training, especially now that we can see each other in person. I mean, we'll start with personnel policies, for sure, once this book's completed, and talk about some of those types of things. And I can see that being kind of a several-session-type situation. So yes, we will, but no, we have not recently. But it has been, it's one of the things I think I've enjoyed the most, is, hey, this is what's going on. How can we troubleshoot it so it's best for the employee, the supervisor, and the city? I think there's, being able to take all those perspectives into account, I just think is important. Yeah, so with the written warning, that again goes into the employee's personnel file. Those items are also tracked in how we manage AMPs, so we have these regular conversations with employees, their annual employee evaluation, our AMP system, also can then take into account that information and say, "Hey, we're still struggling here", or, "No, we're making good progress here", and so that's another way to document things as we go along. Should we get past a written warning and the expectations are still not being met, we start to talk about suspension and final written warning, which can lead into a recommendation for termination of employment. That's kind of worst-case scenario with any discipline situation. Again, we work well together. I appreciate with our city attorney, city supervisor, other supervisors, as they work through this process, being able to provide the information that we need to, again, try to support the employee to get to best-case scenario. We're really looking for success, but if it's something that just isn't working out, this is the process we follow to make sure that we've exhausted all avenues for finding ways to make it work out.
Out of curiosity, what is the length of time for the probationary time?
Our probationary period, we have a six-month probationary period for employees. For six months in a new position, oftentimes, if you're promoted or transferred, and there will be a six-month probationary period that will also apply, but all new employees have a six-month, with the exception of our officers. They have a 12-month. That's because with post and some other things, those timelines just run much longer than six months.
So it is possible for an employee to be under suspension and then have that probationary period, right? And then get transferred and be under another six months? Or are they not eligible for a transfer at that point?
They would not be eligible for a transfer. If you're in your probationary period, you cannot apply for another position. If you are on a performance improvement plan through AMPs...
Stay in that position.
You aren't eligible for a transfer to a different position as well. The idea is kind of want to get the wheels back on, and then we can continue forward, and those opportunities open up.
Are there exceptions for that, like say the supervisor's like, you're in the AMPs process and things are still shaky, but maybe it's because of the job itself and not because of other things, like, "But you know what? There is an opening here, and I think your skills really go here." I mean, is there a chance for that to happen early?
You know, I haven't seen that instance in my time with the city. I could imagine that being a conversation point. We don't want to just close all the doors. We will, at times, if there's a probationary period and there's one thing that's significant but not so significant, then it's really a deal-breaker at that point. We will extend a probationary period to provide extra support. We'll do some things there. I don't know if we've...
There's nothing preventing a city, as the employer, saying, "Hey, this fit didn't work. You're still in..." And we call it introductory period. Probationary period is typically means you're on probation. You're not on probation, you are introducing yourself to the employer-employee relationship. So there are certain rights and regulations that go along with that. But if there is a situation where you're hired for this, but three months into it, it's pretty apparent that maybe this position in another department is a better fit, then there's nothing saying that the city could not say, "Hey, we'll offer you that employment." Of course, a new introductory period would be implemented at that time, but the employee, his or him or herself, wouldn't be able to say, "Well, I'm kind of floundering in this position, so I want to move over here."
Thanks for getting in my head and figuring out what I really wanted to ask.
Thank you. So then, Recommendation for Termination of Employment. We talked through the process of that, which really just reiterates the progressive discipline process, that there are steps that need to be taken, support that needs to be provided. We do work with ICREM directly when it comes to terminations to ensure that they're understanding where we're at. We provide the information. It's nice to get another set of eyes on that and make sure we're doing everything we can. And that also helps us with an annual reduction in premiums. I think that's the right word. Premiums for our annual insurance contract with them, so among a few other things we do, so. Yes, and then with that process, we also have a grievance procedure process, and that's the next policy. You also have some forms in here. We like to keep those with the policy. We're trying to keep it kind of a one-stop-shop for people, so they don't read their policy, and "Where's my form?", and "Where's this?", so pulling all that together.
You know, actually, I have to say, that was really something I really appreciate seeing. Yeah.
Reading the policy is one thing. Remembering where all the forms are, another, so, yeah.
I just want to say that's great.
Thank you. So flip through a few pages of that. So an employee grievance, this would be any instance where an employee feels, and these are the topics that we include, but they are certainly not limited to these topics. Any sort of workplace harassment, discrimination, health and safety, supervisor conducts, and then adverse changes in employment conditions. And really, I think where the employee grievance meets the disciplinary process is if an employee feels they're not being treated equally or fairly. That's where that grievance process would come into place with that disciplinary process. But other instances may be something outside. Their employment or employment status may not have been discussed. We've got all these other things. We want to have a way for employees to voice concerns, so we outline how they can do that and what that process might look like. We talk about the formal grievance steps, because we typically do an investigation when there's a grievance of seriousness to be considered. One of the things that we try to work with employees best on, there's instances where an employee may say, "I have a concern, and it is X, Y, and Z, but I don't want anything done about it", which is difficult. So we try to provide that process so they can see how that would work out, should they say, "Yes, please, I'd like to do something about it", because it's difficult to help the situation when you're told not to, so we work through that.
Do you investigate every grievance?
For the most part, yes. When an employee comes in and says, "Hey, I've got an issue. I think it's a grievance. If there's another way to resolve it, we will resolve it." It doesn't necessarily always involve an investigation, but there is a resolution, I believe, of some sort that we work through. If that makes sense.
So you become involved in the situation, no matter what?
Yes, yes.
So if you think that the complaint actually has merit, do you ever like recommend that they do something like, file with the state Human Rights Commission or the EEOC?
Yeah, and well, and especially if it's something that is really significant, whether they want to talk about it or not, but it's a legal, ethical, moral type, I mean, it's something that has to be addressed. I tell them upfront, "If it's something we have to do, take action", again, we will. That's the city has to, to protect the employee, to protect itself. We also outline in here that human resources isn't necessarily the only person you need to come to with a grievance. If the grievance involves human resources, we want somebody to be able to go to another individual. And so the city attorney and city supervisor are listed there. And an employee can always go to their supervisor, their supervisor's supervisor, and we just work on making sure that everybody knows how to take those and forward them appropriately, or help a person, work through those details, so definitely more training in that area to come as well.
I would say, just my two cents, because it doesn't have any, I like what you're putting in here. I just, I hope that when new employees come on, when they're getting bombarded with everything anyway, you might as well scare them a little more, you know, and just say, "If there is a grievance, you may have to go outside of your department to share it with somebody", right? Because I think that's where it gets really difficult. It's like, "Yeah, I have this problem. If I go to so-and-so, they're gonna, it's gonna be a change." So just to, I guess, provide, hoping it never happens, a way for that new employee to know what the other avenues are if you get to a place where you can't talk to anyone in your department.
Yeah, yeah.
Has it ever happened that you had a grievance or a moment where an employee came forward and you didn't do anything?
Aside from counseling, I mean, there's always some amount of counseling. We'll talk through, a situation comes to mind where we talked through quite a bit, and the employee came around and said, "Okay, oh, I do see this, or I don't see that", and I say, "You know, we can do a training on this." So there's some different, something always seems to happen, just the level to which it rises will be different on every situation.
If I may, there are situations where, say, an employee comes in and they think that their supervisor is singling them out. And so it turns out that, you know, "I've been talked to several times for being late, and I'm only 15 minutes late." Well, that's not really something to grieve. You need to be at work on time. That is part of the employment relationship. So something like that, it would be, the suggestion is maybe you get to work on time. Filing a grievance is not going to likely give you the relief that you seek. So situations like that, sometimes employers will come up with something that just isn't appropriate for a grievance, or maybe some other way to deal with it, I think is what Jen's trying to say.
Right, and I think there's an employee will come in with like the symptom of my employers or my supervisor singling me out, get down to the nugget of the why, and let's address the why, and that's usually where it ends up taking a different turn than an investigation or something like that, because it's truly not a grievance at that point.
That same employee could be having some sort of family issue that causes.
Absolutely.
The 15-minutes thing. So I'm wondering if that, if investigation is a formal investig-, like a capital I and then a small i.
Well, we would sit down and say, you know, "We're having trouble with 15 minutes. Well, I can't get to work 15 minutes early because I have to drop so-and-so off at school." "Oh, well, let's talk about that. Let's see if we can set up, you know, be a more formal, flexible scheduling. You shift to lunch, you do this", finding a resolution in that way instead.
There are lots of recommendations to seek under the Employee Assistance Program, so there...
Absolutely.
When, as Jen says, as you're getting to the why, there may be a multiplicity of things that can be done, which don't involve grievance or something like that. So it's kind of a one-stop-shop. Tell us what the issue is, and then we'll hopefully steer you in the right direction.
So I was following up on what Sandra said, and that was with respect to when does it hit the next level, if your concern is with respect to that. Looking at the disciplinary action, it seems to me that under the counseling and verbal warning, it only talks about your supervisor. When you get up to the written warning, it actually has supervisor, department head, or manager, so it gets you somebody else to talk with.
Yes, exactly. And somebody else for that supervisor to talk with about the situation that's at hand, to make sure that, you know, "Am I seeing this clearly?", just, you know, another set of eyes again to make sure that we're doing the most that we can.
I was just wondering whether or not, I mean, like supervisors would know that before they decide to start, that if the person's going to be a real hard person to talk with, that they may reach up a little bit higher and help on that?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, yeah. So that's, in a nutshell, our grievance process, and of course, we include the process with this policy as well, how an employee can go about that. Let's see here. Yeah, we talk, it's a lot of process that, which works well. I think that tries to be helpful. And then a grievance form, we don't, I don't think we have anything formally in place where somebody could write something down instead of having to go talk to someone. In more significant grievance cases, that can be really nerve-wracking, really stressful, and so providing a way for somebody else to get that either out or down on paper, we thought would be helpful, yeah. In the new policy, the Name Clearing Hearing, this is a recommendation from ICREM, our insurer, and it goes kind of along with the grievance policy in a way, but it focuses more on if an employee feels that they were discriminated against or retaliated against, and it ended in termination or demotion or something like that. The idea being that a person has a personal property interest in their reputation, and that we want to make sure that we're being fully transparent in how we work with them on that, and being respectful of that person as well. So this would be something that if a demotion, termination, something like that had happened, the employee would have, or the ex-employee would have this process by which to come in and say, "Okay, this is why I got terminated. My name has this issue now attached to it", and to discuss that. And that's directly with the city supervisor at that point, to get the supervisor, the HR manager, whoever it may be, kind of a direct line of contact. Our grievance procedure as well has the city supervisor component in there, so that we have someone that can talk right to the top there. This policy is newer, and ICREM is recommending it. There are a lot of states that are adopting legislation that applies to requiring, or that regards to requiring this. Idaho has not yet, but ICREM's recommended it, and so we've included it, with some adjustments. This isn't the original ICREM policy, but adjusted it so that it works well for us.
Great.
The only thing, and just to have this on the microphone that I'm asking this, I'm assuming that our legal team has looked at it, and they think it's also right up.
So all of our policies, I start with the draft in HR, and then we route them to our risk management team, legal, city supervisor, and our employee advisory committee. So everybody, we get at least a representative from hopefully all of the groups taking a look at them before they, excuse me, make it to committee.
I just want to say that I appreciate how much time this takes, because you're plowing through the manual, and you're doing different sections of it, and each of those takes a lot of time, and bodies that have to check it, and I think it looks great.
Thank you. And we're down to, we have less to go than we have to do, so I'm excited. It's downhill side, and we've gotten some biggies out of the way, so that's helpful as well.
But it's not as if you don't have other work to do besides drafting these, so thank you.
Thank you.
I think this ought to go on general, or the main agenda.
Well, sort of...
Really? Does it need to?
It doesn't need to. Typically, the policies go through council. They don't have general application throughout the city population. They're more of an internal policy. So typically, the committee has asked the questions, and if somebody wants to pull it off, it's fine, but typically it gets put on the consent. That is not to discourage you from doing it. Just want to remind the council or the committee that we have a very large meeting coming up, so this may be delayed to a subsequent meeting for time-wise.
The only reason I do, I bring it up is because we've had quite the lively conversation with the three of us. And the other three aren't suffering for words either.
Well, I would say, though, because I guess I want to thumb wrestle today, because I'm fine going either way, but I think generally, like, I know the questions I asked were mainly because I just wanted them on record, right? And so I think we have that, and we have it in minutes, I think, if people want to look it over. I had, I mean, just in my questions, I had nothing that was a red flag. I had nothing I was really concerned about. I really just wanted to make sure that those were questions that others might ask, so it could go on consent. But if, I'll let you win the thumb wrestle.
No, I don't know that it's necessarily a hill I want to die on, except that it is important information for the council to have, but having had this thumb wrestle, I suppose what we could do is go the other route and just say, "All right, it's on consent. If somebody wants to pull it for more discussion, they can." All right.
Would you have any issue if we were to wait one meeting, just in case someone wanted to pull it off?
I think that's smart.
No, no problem at all.
It's more concern for you.
Maybe I'll have another batch through committee by now, who knows?
Be like the Jen Show at one of these council meetings, then. Okay, so that is the end of our regular agenda. We have a couple awesome reports. David Schott's got one about the Water Conservation and Parks Irrigation Program.
That's great.
Thanks, Jen.
I've seen it a couple times now. Go, David.
Strategic irrigation.
I know, it's scary, right?
Gives it a fancy name. You're on, buddy.
Well, if it would be okay with the committee, I would like to present from up here rather than the table, just because we've got a battery on the screen forwarder thing, so. Well, thank you very much for having me this afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here. Today, I want to talk about our proposed Strategic Irrigation Program. This is in combination, Water Conservation and Parks Irrigation. So we all know that water is a precious resource. I had a friend of mine about 15 or 20 years ago tell me that, "You know, water in the West is going to be the next gold rush", and I think he was on to something 15, 20 years ago. To ensure the sustainability of this precious resource, we want to look at water conservation in parks, specifically through our irrigation systems. We've discussed this amongst staff with a few different departments, Public Works and Parks and Recreation. This afternoon, I'll be discussing kind of the background and a city plan review, a couple plans that are relevant to this, introduction of the pilot program to conserve water in the parks, and then I'll conclude with some other things we're looking into and slowly implementing as well. So Parks is a large user of outdoor irrigation water pumped by the city. This is primarily through our irrigation systems for turf area. So in 2018, Parks, and this is for parks, green spaces, and athletic fields, we used 29.2 million gallons of the 289.8 million gallons that was pumped by the city. So Parks' portion of irrigation water pumped was 10.1%. 2019, that was down to 28.4 million gallons. In 2020, we were down to 26 million gallons, or 10.4%. And so without my pointer, the graphic in the upper right is just a graphic to show that water usage increases through the summer months, mostly from irrigation systems. And then the graphic in the bottom is just showing kind of the trend on how much Parks used, how many million gallons. And then all outdoor would be the middle column, and then our percentage in parks. We hover right around that 10%.
Dave, you can use your mouse cursor. It'll show up on the screen.
Oh, good idea, Gary. Thank you. Oh, yes. So this graphic, this is the summer months here, and then we're looking at, again, how many gallons, millions of gallons Parks used out of the total for the city pumped for irrigation, and then our percentage, our cut from that. So this is just a zoomed-in view of that. So this is Moscow Parks water usage. Since 2017, we have seen a reduction, and I'd like to give a little shout-out to Parks Cruze. In that same time, we've added a lot of acreage and turf for new parks as well, and I think that's really just more cultural. Parks is really invested for this asset. They're looking for efficiencies. For example, they've got irrigation logs they keep on site, so we don't spend so much time chasing our tail. And knowledge and training that they've done, so we've got a really good staff that are really pertinent to this. Gone are the days where, "Hey, the park's really swampy. Let's turn the irrigation off", and, "Ooh, it's drying out. Let's just crank it all the way up." It's really a lot of adjustments and a lot of just paying attention. Again, this is that percentage of all water pumped through irrigation. We're, I didn't do the average there, but, you know, we're right around that 10%, especially over the last five years.
David, didn't we also make a big run at irrigation systems and smart irrigation systems and training by our people on those irrigation systems in that same period of time?
Yes, we've started to implement that at Euler, and I'll cover that a little bit later in the presentation. But yeah, the city's invested a substantial amount of time and cost to send folks out to get irrigation training and the smart irrigation system, so. Just a little background, we draw water from two aquifers, the Wanapum, which is the shallow one. This is only utilized during hot-dry weather, is my understanding, in the Grand Ron, which is the deep one at 300 feet. Together, these two aquifers make up the Palouse Groundwater Basin. This is just an aerial that shows the aquifer, just for reference. And so now we're going to move into plan review. So the City of Moscow Strategic Plan. In the Parks section, Parks and Recreation, our philosophy under stewardship, is preserving and serving cultural, natural, and historical resources. In the same strategic plan, within the Public Works, declining city water supply. The aquifer is our sole water supply. We don't have surface water. It supplies an average of 2.3 million gallons per day, and this is an average that Nicole Baker provided me from 2001 to 2020, and continues to decline at a rate that makes it unsustainable. The 26th Waters Conservation Plan, and this is one of the main focuses of this program, is local government should lead by example. And also, the city has established a water conservation program in support of PIBAC. And then we get into our master plan, Parks and Recreation, Water Conservation. The goal is to reduce water usage in public parks and properties. This was in the 2019 update. Objectives to consider is consider strategic, it calls for browning in the plan, but we're calling it golden-ing certain parks, specific areas, and other properties. And consider initiating a city water reduction program utilizing a pilot test area within the park system.
Did Tyler Palmer come up with that term?
I believe that was our MPA intern with the golden. I'll give Tyler some more credit a little bit later in the presentation. And so this is where I want to transition. So Parks is a great place to expend the investment of water. It's a community amenity for all the public to use. So using water to have good, healthy turf is really a good idea. It brings people together, and everybody can use it. You don't necessarily need a stellar lawn when you got a park right next door. So investing these dollars in water to Parks is a good idea. I use the, kind of the same line of thinking, is not everybody needs a swimming pool in their backyard. The city provides a municipal pool for everybody to use. Kind of the same thought here. However, there are areas in parks where there's an opportunity to reduce irrigation and conserve this precious resource, and so that's what I'll get into now. This is the Strategic Irrigation Program, the SIP, and I'd like to give credit to Tyler Palmer, our deputy city supervisor, who came up with the SIP acronym.
Water SIP, am I getting it?
Like a bad penny, Tyler.
So to address water conservation throughout Parks Irrigation, will we begin reducing the irrigation to the following Parks and city-owned properties in this pilot program? The goal is to reduce water usage where feasible. The goal is to reduce water usage where feasible throughout the park system. We chose 8th Street Reservoir, Virginia Triangle, the Water Reclamation and Reuse Facility, Milton Arthur Park, the turf areas of Alteras Park, Vista Park, the turf area, the South Triangle at Gormley has turf, and then the south section of Anderson Frontier Park. Ooh, I forgot Frontier, my apologies. Fire Station 2, and the Bridge Street property. I would note the Bridge Street property isn't currently irrigated, but it makes a good control because it's not irrigated. This is just some photos of the different areas. So 8th Street Reservoir. We've got the Virginia Triangle, which is just this triangle of turf. We've got the Werf up in here. Milton Arthur Park, which is, right now, is just turf. Alteras Park, we've got these turf areas. We're not suggesting the planting areas, just the turf areas. Vista Park.
Where is that, David?
Vista Park?
Yeah.
It's the water tower over near the ballfields to the east.
Vista Water Tank, it's the area surrounding the water tank.
Gormley, near Field 2, down here, we've got some turf. Anderson Frontier Park, most of our amenities are up on the north side of the park, and we've got this huge sea of turf. Fire Station 2, station being here, turf area. And then this is the Bridge Street property here. So Nicole Baker, City of Moscow Environmental Services Coordinator, put this together for me. And this is just an example of the water we may save. So if you just follow me here, we're looking at a 23-week irrigation system. If we're doing the SIP program in these areas, and we're putting .5 inches of water every two weeks down, we're going to use 5,373 gallons per year. Conversely, in a traditional turf that's getting watered at 1.5 inches a week, we're looking at 32,240 gallons. So this will be a cost or gallon saving of 26,867 gallons. And this is based on 1,500 square feet, so approximately the size of the Wyscape area out front here from the west entry landing to the south, the original Wyscape in there. And so some substantial cost savings there, or cost savings, excuse me, water savings. So why were these areas selected? Well, we looked at criteria. Areas were classified into tiers. So this first tier, the areas we're proposing or having this pilot program, are areas with low recreational use. They don't have a shelter, they don't have a playground, they don't have other major amenities. They also don't include areas with a lot of mature trees. Reason being is trees are a good investment in water with the long-term benefits. For example, the shading. If you see an area that's drying out, it's typically greener under the shade of a tree than the surrounding area. Tier two, that won't be part of this program, are, I would call, typical parks. They've got some sort of amenity. Kuanis Park's a good example, Rotary Park, Ottness Park. And then tier three would be our high-use areas. This would include East City Park. The Herc and the Pool would fall under this category. Fire Station 3, it's their headquarters. It's also an entry point into our town. And of course, City Hall, it's the focal point of our government here. And then our athletic fields. Really want to keep those in good shape, just, well, look nice. And also, player safety. So what are the impacts? So we're not proposing shutting off the irrigation. We're proposing reducing the irrigation, so the turf will not die, it'll just golden. So turf will turn golden and go dormant. Dormancy is a protective mechanism, allowing the turf to survive in dry conditions. We'll keep it alive. Irrigation system will supply a reduced amount of water. We're going to go with a half inch to start off, probably a quarter inch a week, for a half inch every two weeks. Some things we're going to monitor internally is just, this may increase weeds, but we will monitor. And the key to this is monitor. If the turf dies, we're fighting a losing battle. All of a sudden, we've got a lot of labor costs and rehabilitation costs. So that's why we've got a pilot program here, and we'll keep monitoring it. So in the short term, monitor areas, reduce irrigation, calculate water saved based on water meters. It sounds like the Environmental Services can help us out with that. And then looking at some signage to lead by example. You know, this is a great graphic here. This was the Wyscape area in front of City Hall, 78% less water with the Wyscape. So long-term, potentially rotate, reduce irrigation areas depending on the results of the pilot program. Continue installing and updating irrigation systems with central irrigation. Gary, this was to your point. At other field, we've got it up and installed and operational about midway through last year. This is a central irrigation system. It monitors conditions out there and irrigates accordingly. We've also got a flow meter on that. One of the biggest challenges with irrigation is it's like you have a mainline break. You may not see the results of that break until it surfaces. You get a mucky area, or some people call it a lawn zit, something along those lines, then you know you got a break. But if it's deep, like at Mountain View, you know, six feet down, it may be two, three weeks before it manifests itself at the surface, and then it may manifest not exactly where the break is. So anyways, the flow meter will tell us instantly that, hey, it irrigated too much, there's something wrong here. So just for comparison, in 2019 at Euler Field, off the meter, we used 426,400 million gallons in 2019. In 2020, we're down to 355,500 gallons, not million gallons, excuse me. So we're, just in the last year, we've saved about 70,900 gallons at that site. I think a large part of that's probably with that central irrigation system. Other things we're doing is, Jen, our deputy city super's also been putting together a utility newsletter to get the word out and lead by example. So this picture at the bottom, grab the mouse here, this is what Spokane's doing, Go Gold, to save the blue, or save blue. So they're leading by example and browning some of their parks and fire stations and whatnot. Hopefully, homeowners will do the same. And then I had to put in a plug on to my kids, just kind of the point of, hey, you know, we're thinking about our future generations and the future of Moscow's water. So some good points to keep in mind. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or take comments.
I think it's really cool. It's really, it's an, what could be an otherwise kind of boring topic, but it's really cool the way it's being implemented. Maybe it's just you explaining it to us, but it's, that's a responsible and timely thing to do. And I am hugely in favor of this. I think the educational, I don't know about Go Gold to Save Blue, I don't know if I love that or not. But I do think that the continual public understanding of their park maybe being the one that goes gold is going to be key. So we'll need to be, Gold, Gold, yeah, I don't know how to sell that.
Well, I can tell you, you're offended by the blue because of Boise State, and you like the gold because of Idaho. And I hope that we're all like that. But I also want to say, I think this is really great. I've seen lots of portions of this over the last, I feel like, 10 days. You know, and I've thought a lot about it. And I really appreciate the ways that you all are looking at what can we do to still make it usable and friendly, because that is a big part of what Moscow is. And yet, at the same time, showing people by example how to do it right, and coming up with good ways to save water. So I think, I mean, really, the next step is showing people that, hey, this is a good thing, and I loved. Tyler, I'm going to throw him on, I hope, on top of the bus, not under, on this one. We were at a committee meeting, I don't even remember which one at this point, last week. And he said that peer pressure maybe can really work a lot, so maybe starting a campaign about, show us pictures of your yard, what is golden, you know, and maybe get things going that way. So when people are walking by yards, you're like, nice job not watering, instead of, look at that, let's just green. It's like, oh, green lawn. You know, but I just, I think there are lots of ways to do it, and I appreciate the way that you all are looking at it, and I appreciate the communication getting out, because I really do think that's the way to get going, and it is that weird peer pressure part, too.
In terms of the publicity on that, I think that the awards that they have every year, maybe they still do it, but they used to, on wyscaping is a great thing. And I think that that was really done, I can see it in Mountain View, where you do some of the park and not all the park. And I think it made perfect sense when you decide which park really needs to stay green for kids' sporting events. And so that makes sense. I guess, and I like the term golden, but I also feel like that golden is one end, and the other end is also wyscape, and you can put plants in there. And to align the gold space with flowers and colored flowers. And if you get dropped out of plants, they can go for a long time. I just have one question, really, and that is, do we use gray water for our irrigation system?
Parks does not. I believe the Werf has a reuse irrigation, and Tyler can speak to that.
The university uses a lot of our water, but I'm curious as to why our...
It's not gray water, though. It is irrigation water, but it's, or, excuse me, it's Werf water, but it isn't gray water.
Yeah, Maureen, we don't have it, yeah. The gray water is generally a different definition. We have reuse water from the Water Reclamation and Reuse Facility, and that is used to water all of the green spaces at the University of Idaho. And so they will, but we have, the Werf facility itself is watered with that water as well, and that's the only city facility that is on reuse water. With a sewer project a few years ago, we installed a pipe to Gormley Park because we had an opportunity with a trench open to get a pipe in the ground. And we have a tacit agreement with the University of Idaho to tie that pipe into their system when they conduct a project to expand their reuse irrigation system. And so that would be the first park that we have the potential to bring on to our, to use reclaimed water. But we don't have, we don't have any of the parks on the reuse system.
So the infrastructure. So the infrastructure is our main stumbling point there.
Yeah, when you look at, you know, there's been conversations about, well, you know, do we install a reuse system and just water the city's parks with the reuse, rather than potentially sending that to the university or in addition to sending it to the university? One of the problems we run into is the university takes every drop that we can provide during the summer. And so it would be kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul sort of situation. Because if we don't send it for them to water, they're just pulling out of the same aquifer system that we are. And then the infrastructure that it would take to build an independent pressure irrigation system and pump it across town, with most of our parks being over on the east side of town, would be a pretty large investment. So that's not to say that down the road, that could, that may become more feasible. But at this point, that really doesn't pencil out from a conservation standpoint.
Thank you.
If I may.
Please.
I really appreciate the analogy between the swimming pool and the, and the parks being there for the whole community to use. So if you want to save money, not pay as high a water bill, conserve water, you can still go use the city park. Just like if you don't want to buy a swimming pool, you can send your kids to the Hamilton Low Aquatics Center. That's great. And this has been discussed, I remember when we first started tiered water rates. There were some folks who said, why are you watering the parks? I love the idea of determining which parks will benefit from being green and which parks really don't have to be to provide that amenity. But if you have people who aren't watering as much, their personal lawns, they might want to go sit in a lush, green, public space. So I appreciate the thought you've put into it in setting forth a plan that we can utilize so that we still have some green spaces, but there are some spaces where the city's going to be conserving as well.
Well, thank you, Gary, and it was really a team approach with those ideas that came down the pipeline.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, great, thank you, David.
We always appreciate a picture of a kid.
That's right.
Any staff?
Nothing through them, madam.
Okay, then I say, let's adjourn.
Yes.
Yes.